Hello, I'm Jason Ruiz, the City Hall reporter here at the Long Beach Post and welcome to one of the post debates. This one's featuring the candidates for the city's ninth city council district. It is the city's northernmost district and generally includes the areas north of South Street. It has changed a little bit though from the last election because you know, some of the neighborhoods on the on the western side like the coolest triangle in Longwood were redistricted out. And they're now part of the eighth. And for the first time in eight years, there's going to be a new city council member in this district and it's going to be one of these two candidates here that we have with us today. This is one of several debates that we are we're hosting for the no in prior to the November eighth election. For more of our coverage, including head to head comparisons of these candidates and others. Go to lbpost.com/elections. Co-hosting with me today is Jeremiah Dobrik. He's the breaking news editor here at the Long Beach Post. And over the next forty five minutes or so, we'll be asking questions of candidates for the city council district. And they are Joni Rixody and Jenny Gonzalez.
And hi, I'm Jeremiah Dobrik. I'll be your co-moderator today and here's some of the ground rules for today. Each candidate is going to have two minutes to answer each question. And there's a timer on screen. The audience won't be able to see the timer, but the candidates and us moderators can see the timer. And you would just ask that you guys wrap up when that timer runs out so we can avoid interrupting you. If a candidate is attacked directly, they'll have a one minute opportunity to respond if they wish. And then candidates will also have an opportunity for a closing statement of two minutes. But first you'll each get a two minute opening statement and we're going to start with Jenny, if you'd introduce yourself to viewers.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Long Beach Post and we're hosting this public forum. My name is Jenny Gonzalez. I would I would be honored to earn your vote to become your next city council person from the ninth district. I want to thank the voters from the ninth district for your trust. And that got me to the November eighth general election. Okay, the change we deserve is here after eighteen years. We have the opportunity to elect a candidate for the people. I'm a candidate for the people. And I sincerely believe that the most important endorsement there is are the voters endorsement. They're people, they're not big unions. They're not a big time politicians, they're not corporations that don't even happen to live here. And they're not elected officials, they're voters who have confidence and have to turn out and vote for you. That's who I want to impress. Okay, I'm a CPA. And I'm a twenty year resident of the ninth district. I'm also the founder and a CEO of a nonprofit. One of my focuses is mental health. And what I want to do for North Long Beach is make it a happier neighborhood, a pedestrian neighborhood. Okay, I believe in equity, fairness and transparency. As your next city council member, I'll use my expertise as an accountant and an IRS auditor to identify wasteful spending in the city budget. And I want to know the city, the district nine residents to know that their taxpayer money is being spent equitably. Okay. We will, our community to be to be served by police services and homeless services programs. And please keep in mind that I will serve with compassion as your city council person. Please vote for me. That's it.
Thank you. And Joni, you're up next.
Good afternoon. And again, yes, thank you to the Long Beach Coast for hosting this forum. My name is Dr. Joni Rixody and I'm proud to be with you today as candidate for Long Beach City Council District Nine. Over the past decade, I've been hard at work in the ninth district, helping us deliver the uptown Renaissance you see today in North Long Beach. I serve on my local neighborhood association board, business improvement district, and volunteer with countless district nine nonprofits. I currently serve as the Chair of the Long Beach Planning Commission where I've had direct impact and vote in bringing new businesses, affordable housing, and economic drivers like banks and grocery stores to the ninth district and throughout Long Beach. Our ninth district community deserves someone who'll be ready on day one. Someone who actively and passionately advocate for them and put an equity lens on issues that would serve to disenfranchise us. Someone who not only shares the community's concerns around homelessness, public safety and the environment, but has a demonstrated track record of success. Issues we are facing are not unique, but my experience as a public health professional will bring a unique lens to how we work on those challenges. As a ninth district council member, I believe we must focus on continuing our partnerships with local county and state agencies to provide a compassionate approach to people experiencing homelessness. Invest in our business corridors throughout the district, provide opportunities for new businesses and promote our existing businesses that are still struggling to recover from COVID nineteen. I'd like to create a sub-public health subcommittee on the Long Beach City Council to help us plan for future health emergencies. And develop an office of data and evaluation to create true metrics for success with all of our city run programs to guarantee we are maximizing every dollar in our budget. As a mother of two young children, I want to ensure that they are growing up in a community that they can be proud of. And also see a local government that brings people together who represent different voices to ensure we are providing a seat at the table for everyone. Lastly, I'm proud to have earned the support of an incredible coalition of leaders, including all of the ninth district neighborhood association presidents. They have given me their support because I've demonstrated for the last decade, my commitment to our community and it considered a trusted voice in this community. Thank you.
Great. So we're just going to snake back and forth. So the question will go to you first, Joni. This and this is a question that we've asked all candidates so far because I think it's, I mean, it's voters think that it's one of the biggest issues facing the city and its homelessness. What do you think are the root causes of this? And what do you propose the city do that is not currently doing to address the rising number of people experiencing homelessness in Long Beach?
Um, I think one of the biggest things we've seen over the last few years, right, is issues around housing displacement and just the economics, right? People lost of jobs. And then the additional issue of issues around mental health being some of the biggest reasons and drivers for homelessness. I think the city currently is doing is doing a really good job on addressing homelessness. With our health department being the lead agency, I think one of the things that is an issue that I've seen knocking on doors up here in North Long Beach is that many people don't know that the health department is our lead agency. They naturally think that, you know, if they see someone experiencing homelessness or they see someone on the corridor, they think to call the police is the first response. And so a lot of it is about educating our population and our residents around like who is it that you should call, talking to them about the multi-service center. So when I've talked to businesses, most of them don't actually know that. They don't know about the outreach teams. They don't realize that. And if and if they do know, they'll call once, right? And they'll think, okay, well, I've called once, that is going to address the issue. And what they don't realize is that most people who are experiencing homelessness have had poor experiences with city agencies and officials, so they don't trust individuals, right? They don't trust those organizations. So it takes fifteen, you know, it takes someone between fifteen and twenty touches to get a lot of these folks to say yes. And so we as a community, if we're going to help our unhoused, you know, neighbors, we're going to have to keep calling, we're going to have to keep being persistent and making sure that those outreach teams are continuing to go out and making those touches, building those relationships and making people feel like they're part of the community and that we're serving, we're, you know, we're treating them with compassion. And so, you know, with my public health lens, I'm going to make sure, you know, one of the main focuses I'm going to have on city council is making sure that our health department is well resourced so that they can do the work that they are uniquely qualified to do in this particular area.
And so this came up a little bit on Tuesday with the discussion about metro and, you know, people are being forced off the train and there's no services available at the time that they're being put off the train. And the city has recently expanded its reach team capacity to two, but those teams don't work. You know, past what I think eight, nine o'clock. So, so I mean, is maybe a solution, and we'll give you thirty seconds, but like does the city need to have like a graveyard shift for these outreach workers where like they're available at times when there's nobody else currently to call except for the police?
Well, honestly, yeah, right? I mean, the part of the reason, like I said, again, people reach out to our police departments because the police department is available twenty four seven, right? Um, I've had conversations with faculty. So I work at University of California Irvine in the Center for Statistical Consulting. So I've worked with faculty members, say in the School of Nursing and et cetera, that have done research projects where they have done outreach to to folks experiencing homelessness, so they know best practices. And that's exactly one of the things that they talk about is expanding hours and making sure that you have individuals that are available when people actually need them.
Right, yeah, we need, I mean, got to have services available around the clock. Homelessness doesn't, you know.
It's not, it's not a nine to five thing, right?
Right. Jenny, the same question to you. What do you, what do you think are the root causes of homelessness and what do you propose the city do differently to to address the the rising population of people in the city that are that are experiencing homelessness?
Okay, there are different reasons why different people are homeless, you know, for example, one population that I know of, you know, for example, my stepdaughter with mental disabilities, she would have been homeless if we had not bought a larger house and moved her in, you know, so sometimes women with disabilities, mental disabilities, they become victims and we have to get them off the street quicker. However, I'm told by my friend who works with that population, there's a real need for for housing for that particular segment of the population. Now that's one. Another one I see is just women who are in a transition, you know, people get divorced. So I think there needs to be some kind of a special provision made for women in transition, which usually have kids with them. So there's, you know, something like a tax break for for homeowners who take in women in transition. And somehow maybe if that could be worked out, you know, and there's all kinds of other ways, but another thing that you have to face that the salaries that we pay the ordinary workers doesn't match the the rents, there's, there's, you know, a little bit of math applied to that, we can get salaries commensurate with rents here. Things like that are first steps to acknowledging the fact that there is a a housing crisis that we're not addressing, that we must address.
Yeah, absolutely. It's very expensive to live here and anywhere in LA County, really.
If you factor in that people with disabilities, can you imagine that here I'm healthy, I'm healthy? And I can make, you know, but I'm buying a house, but I consider making the rent. So I can make the rent here, but imagine you're a person with a disability or these other things that keep you from getting employment to make the rent. I mean, just imagine it's a difficult life and we must acknowledge that and help them.
Absolutely. Jeremiah has the next question and I believe it's to Jenny first.
Yes, and the the issue we've heard from voters about the most other than homelessness and housing is crime. Crime, crime is up locally. And the Long Beach Police Department, one of the measures they've touted about driving down crime is putting more officers on the street, but specifically walking the beat or riding bicycles. And I'm wondering if you guys think that's an effective approach? And what else could be done, whether it's in the police department or outside of the police department to try to prevent any more rise in crime? And Jenny, that's first to you.
Okay, number one, I'm not focusing so much as a painting picture here. I want North Long Beach to become a pedestrian neighborhood, you know, me, I work late at night and I need to get out, I need to be able to walk at night. And I think maybe if every park can have a a community house, a coffee house where we can walk to and meet our friends and walk back home. We need cops along the way to facilitate that. We just don't need cops for cops sake. And they have to respect the fact that they're here on our on our land and they need to respect our rules and respect our cultures, you know, the cops are invited guests, are invited guests. I have to speak English. They're invited guests and they need to go by our rules and respect our culture and our cultures that we want to walk around in our neighborhood and stop being afraid of each other. You know, the pandemic has not helped anything. So we have to acknowledge the fact that we've had a setback. You know, we need to get to know each other in our community to really, really need to get back together and find out what's happening.
Uh, Joni, we'll go to you with that same question. Do you want me to read it again?
Ah, please.
So crimes up and the police have said to the main ways they're trying to combat this are putting more officers on the street, but on bicycles on foot. Do you think that's a successful approach? And is there anything else that could be done outside the department or inside the department?
Uh, yeah, so you know, public safety has been a growing and continuing concern here in district nine and we should acknowledge all over the city, right? And I think the the program or the community policing program that the the Long Beach Police Department has put into place is actually is actually very good, right? Because it increases visibility, increases interaction with our our residents, with the police officers, making sure that, you know, we're able to to communicate with them about our concerns. You know, because not everybody necessarily always feels comfortable or feels like they can call dispatch and and report something, right? So but if you have a police officer on your street that is your community police officer that you're used to seeing, you build that rapport, you build that relationship and that improves the interaction that the community has with our police officers. But from a larger context, I'm going to put on my public health hat here because issues around crime and safety are public health issues. And sometimes people don't necessarily frame it like that, but you know, our public safety personnel are often asked to do a job that they're not necessarily sufficiently trained for depending on the context that we're in. And it says, we continue to, you know, really assess our public safety continuum. Really to reframe the discussion from simply just a kind of addressing crime as a singular issue to the broader ideas around crime reduction, intervention and prevention. And to do so, we really need to think more broadly about the influences and circumstances that people face and there are relevant factors such as, you know, their age, their economic circumstances, where they're born, where they live, where they work, where they play. Really thinking about those 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 broader contexts, we call them social determinants of health, right? Those broader contexts that allow for an environment where people are interacting with our kind of incarcerated and justice system and making sure that when we're thinking about crime prevention, we're thinking about it in a more holistic terms. And that's something that, you know, again, a public health lens is really going to support our city in doing.
And I want to follow up on that. Just so what's actually a step that that you could take on the council to look more through that public health lens and then the change you could make that actually affects the discussion we're having?
Yeah, so again, I'm always going to go back to the city of Long Beach is unique, right? It's well, not unique, but it's one of two cities in the county, right, that has its own health department, right? The folks in the health department are folks that have violence prevention programs. They have lots of really great programming that they've developed over time. That because they are majority grant funded, it's difficult for them to pivot and focus on those. So there are lots of things that we have on the shelf right now that could be enacted as part of, you know, the work that we're doing as far as is public safety. And thinking about like, how do we interact and making sure that people from a financial standpoint have the the support that they need so that perhaps they're not in a situation where they have to commit a crime. So we have things already present, sorry, I'm going a little bit long, but we have things that are already present and developed. It's just making sure that we are supporting our health department in order to do it.
And Jenny, I wanted to give you an extra thirty seconds there too, if you look like you had something you wanted.
I think she has a great resume to be the head of the health department. But I'm not sure if that's what we need on city council. You know, when I think of public safety, you know, I think of typically, public safety is the most expensive thing with municipalities. That's what I'm studying. I'm studying governmental accounting and all these different governments I'm studying. Public safety is like the number one cost of our city government. We just don't give out money for free. We find out what what the money's paying for. And one of the things I don't like to pay for is new boat pay. That's what the cops call overtime, new boat pay. And we need to trim some of that new boat pay and we need to look at other items, you know, and that's the skill I have. We're not running for health department, we're running for city council. You need an accountant, somebody who knows how to trim the budget. That's how I know how to do.
There are, yeah. Most people in Long Beach can't afford a boat and and I mean, a lot of people are struggling to pay their rents and this next question is about housing. You guys are probably familiar with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance that was recently adopted. It it applies to a small portion of the city downtown, the corridor along Long Beach Boulevard. If you're elected to city council, would you support revisiting that idea and maybe having it applied to a larger part of the city, maybe even the whole city? Because you know, as housing is being built, the majority of it is market rent, a market rate and and market rate is not something that people are finding, you know, easy to afford. It's very expensive. So this one goes to Joni first. Would you support revisiting that and having it applied to a larger part of the city?
I think eventually, yes. So just for a little background for those who don't know, I am Chair of the City's Planning Commission. So I was on the commission when we passed the inclusionary housing ordinance. And the reason where there are two areas, right? There's area one and area two. So area one is downtown and midtown where we have mandated levels of affordable housing that have to go into developments and then everywhere else in the city is area two. And the reason for that and the discussion that the robust discussion we had on planning commission was just basically thinking about economics of the city and the fact that for the majority of the city, there has been very little housing development outside of downtown and midtown, right? So the concern was if you put in additional kind of regulations, you're going to diminish and decrease the very little that we have in many parts of the of the city. But again, it's like, again, my background, so I work as a statistician. So I'm one of those folks that I want to see now that we've implemented that inclusionary housing ordinance, I want to see like, you know, we've and I pushed for really good metrics for measuring success, right? Because I think that's what's important here. It's like, how do we measure whether or not it's been successful? And once we're able to to do that, we then can say, okay, how might we expand it or augment it in ways to increase that housing production, that affordable housing production in other parts of the city? But I think it's important for us to say, where are we at now? Where were we before? Is it working? And then if it's not working, what do we change it to make to work better for our city? So.
Okay, Jenny, the same question to you, just and for context, you know, for people watching at home who probably aren't, you know, in the weeds with this, the the ordinance basically requires developers who build in these regions to set aside a percentage of the units as affordable. I believe it's eleven percent right now. Maybe twelve.
That's right around it, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, if you have a hundred unit building, eleven of those have to be set aside for a certain level of affordability. If you're elected to city council, Jenny, would you support looking at that and expanding it to a larger part of the city?
But I think it should be a higher percentage, eleven percent. I mean, what percentage of people don't have a, you know, I know of people that go from one housing crisis to the next in Long Beach and then their life keeps falling apart and then they get blamed for for the situation, you know? And I don't think eleven percent is enough. So, you know, I would revisit the whole thing, you know?
All right. A short point.
Do you think, I mean, what percentage, what's what's percentage of poverty here? What's the poverty rate here?
I think it's over eleven percent.
Yeah.
I think rent burden percent is above eleven percent too, but
Yeah.
Jeremiah has another housing question for you guys.
And it's a it's a little more general, but it touches very much on the same idea of how I'll just ask it, how do you, how how, what's your plan to draw investment to North Long Beach? But also do that without driving up costs for existing residents who might be vulnerable to displacement? And we're going to go first to Jenny on that one.
Are you talking about gentrification, the more industry or whatever we get here, the more dollars, the the neighborhood gets didn't, I can't say the word, gentrification, is that it?
There you go, yeah.
No, you know, home sweet home. Have you ever heard of it? Make it a place where people want to stay, you know? Make it a place with culture and everybody thinks, oh, it's Jenny, she hates cops, you know, no, 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 no. Cops are here to service, you know, and make the make the neighborhood a walk-in neighborhood. You know, make it a culture here, make it a, you know, a place for everybody can express themselves, you know, and I went to mental health is it, make it a place of art. You know, and I I'm not, I'm not some proponent of alcohol though, but I am a proponent of marijuana. You know, make it a place of art, great coffee, a great dessert, you know, playing cards in the park. Make it a place where people can hang out at night without being threatened. Make it a place that, you know what? This is what men and women have transitioned as they go through life and the women do it with kids. Okay, accept that bag, give them a place to transition to, you know, let's stop denying things exist. And by the way, every morning with coffee, we should talk about one hour of parking. Do you think, because people have to accept the fact that there's just not parking here. Okay.
Thank you. And Joni, same question to you. How do you, how do you attract that investment to North Long Beach without potentially displacing people?
You know, that's a, it's actually a really great question, right? I think there are a couple of things and I think sometimes people don't realize how the dynamics here in North Long Beach. One of the things that I think is great at kind of protecting us from the level of displacement is the fact that North Long Beach actually has a high level of homeownership, they have very high homeownership rates here. And so that is one thing that protects our particular community from significant amounts of displacement. And then to be completely honest, we haven't had, I mean, we're having a little some some development right now, but we haven't actually haven't had a ton of development in North Long Beach over the last several decades. And much of what's coming are kind of things that are basic amenities. So, you know, like we got our first bank in the last like several decades up here, right? Up until the, you know, and when I moved to North Long Beach, you know, a decade ago, we didn't have any coffee shops. You know, so many of the amenities and developments that's coming to 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 our community are things that are basic amenities that anyone in any community should want to make their their community livable and for them to be able to have the resources that they need. You know, one of the things that we noticed during the pandemic, you know, they had a article in the in the Long Beach Business Journal talking about how when people were staying at home, you know, our tax burden, our sales tax burden, what thirty five percent, we spent a lot of money outside of the city. And I'm buying and purchasing things outside because we don't necessarily have the development, we don't have the resources, we don't have the community serving businesses here that we need. And then additionally, I think the the our city council has put in significant tenant protections over the last several years to make sure that people are being able to stay in their homes. And those are things that we should continue to have discussions on or like, do we need to expand those? Do we need to augment those? What does that look like to make sure that people who are residents here who want to stay here? Because again, North Long Beach is the last bastion really in the city of affordability. We have a lot of young families here. We want to make sure that they're able to stay here, put down roots and are able to, you know, buy a home if they want to buy a home and all of that, so.
So let's make this follow up, not a full two minute. So this was a suggestion from a reader. They said they want to know your elevator pitch. You get, so like thirty thirty seconds is like an elevator, right? So in thirty seconds, we'll do Joni first and go back to Jenny, but your elevator pitch to a business person who you're trying to get to North Long Beach.
Oh, so my business, my business pitch would be, this is a great community of young families, young people, folks who love their communities. Our our entire, you know, community is covered by neighborhood associations that are closely linked. We are supportive of our businesses. We want to be able to have business here that are community serving. And we have a lot of low hanging fruit. Example, we got our first bank recently. We, I was like, we just recently got our first couple of coffee shops. There's lots of community serving businesses that we need here that aren't here and there's an availability for you to be successful.
All right, Jenny, elevator door is closing. You got thirty seconds to convince a business to move to North Long Beach.
Okay. North Long Beach is, number one, think of climate change. Downtown is going to be underwater soon, you know, as coming up to North Long Beach. You know, so far we're surviving, you know, but aside from that, thank you for for putting your trust in me. And 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 I'm not looking for the the big shots, I'm looking for the little shots to endorse me, the little shots that are going to the vote, the voting booth and voting for me, I'm a little shot too. Okay, my opponent outspend me for like eighty thousand dollars, you know, gee, that's a lot, okay?
Your rights over.
Okay, that was a free commercial.
Do you want to respond to that, Joni?
Okay, okay, okay.
Oh, well, my only response was I just wanted to make sure that the elevator pitch was supposed to be about to businesses, right? About why they should come to our community, not necessarily our elevator pitch to why people should vote for us.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. Move to high ground, I think was her point, but Jeremiah has another question about rising tides.
It's a, it's a little more complicated than the elevator pitch, so there's a lot here, so be ready, but it's it's about the Queen Mary. So basically, what should be done with the Queen Mary? It's it's looming out there. The city has put a bunch of options on the table that range from spending a hundred million to a hundred ninety million to scrap it. Two hundred million to five hundred million to dry dock it or just preserving it in place could be a hundred and seventy five million. So with those in mind, what would be your plan for dealing with the Queen Mary? And would you support completing that plan using public money? And we'll first go into Jenny on this.
Gee, complicated. I think it was a mistake way back when and it's just gotten bigger. It's like a mushroom, it's snowballed and now it's our, it's all on our plate. We say, what the heck are we going to do with this? You know, it's a mistake, treat it like a mistake and dispose of it as efficiently without polluting the environment. And then say, gee, that was a mistake that I'm not going to pay for. Somebody else screwed up way back then. I refuse to keep paying for it. I'm going to accept the fact and get over it and move on. It's called sunk costs in the county. You need to get away from sunk costs. They're irrelevant to decision making.
All right, thank you. That was to the point. And Joni, same to you. What will your plan be and what would you support completing that plan using public money?
Um, yeah, so the I think the heart, the rubber meets the road here is the comments you made about public money. Because no matter what we do, we are basically going to be spending several hundred million dollars, right? And whether that's the the city itself or some type of private investment. Um, in my mind, if we could get some type of private investments, willing to take over the Queen Mary, perhaps, you know, really talk seriously about the the developments of that particular area into some type of into some type of like actual entertainment area, I think that's what has to happen. But at the, I think where the rubber meets the road here is that we have to talk about, like, what do we want the Queen Mary to be? It's an iconic asset associated with the city, but like, what do we want it to be moving forward? Is it a hotel, is it an attraction? Is it a a part of a a larger, more broader development? Um, that's the kind of the conversation that I haven't heard, like, um, completely flushed out in the city. Uh, and that, and I want to know, I'm like, what are what are the real opportunities here? Because unfortunately, we spent, you know, several decades with different operators, and we are now in a place where it's the, it's in disrepair, right? It requires a lot in order for it to be be usable, right? Um, as an asset for the city. And so we're going to put that amount of money in it, I I need to hear, I need to hear a clear plan from, you know, city staff and perhaps some folks from our development community about what potentially we really could do, and if it's even feasible, because otherwise, I I I legitimately can't say yes to using public funds for this, when there's so many other things in our city that need funding and need support. So many other programs that could be supporting our, that we could be supporting our community with, with that funds, um, with those funds. And so um, I, you know, from a priority standpoint, I prioritize people, and that's who I want to prioritize when we think about how use public funds in our budget.
Right, and one of the, one of the uh, big expenses um, that uh, future council members are going to face, especially in in districts, you know, like nine, seven, one, is uh, trying to find more, the money to produce more green space, open space. You know, the your, the current council person has tried for eight years. Um, other council people have tried to secure money. I mean, the city put out a report that says it's gonna cost, you know, tens of millions of dollars to acquire and develop land into park space. So what is your plan to bring more open green space to North Long Beach? And this one's to Joni first.
Um, so we are, so that's a complicated question, right? Because we're a built-out community. So it's unfortunately, it's not that we can't necessarily manufacture open space, you know, out of thin air. Um, what we've done, we've done a couple of things over the last several years that I think uh, pertains to the specific question. So one thing is, we as community members work with our current elected officials to do an open space master plan and really talk about the community assets that we currently have as far as our open space and ma- making sure that we're able to utilize them appropriately, effectively, and efficiently um, for our, for the current residents here. Um, and then we as community members also have gotten together, so we have something up here called the North Long Beach Neighborhood Alliance. Um, and we as neighborhood associations got together, and we, we talked about the projects that were potential um, up here in North Long Beach for us to be able to expand our green space. One of those things was something called the ninety-one Green Belt. We as neighborhood associations are, we try to be altruistic here, and we recognize that the area of our community that has the least amount of green space is the area north of the ninety-one. And so we really prioritize the idea of really putting our resources into planning for that ninety-one Green Belt and really saying, okay, we have this unutilized property around this freeway, the freeway is not going anywhere. How can we utilize that space to expand the opportunities for green space here in um, here in the north, in North Long Beach in the ninth district? And so that's the kind of creative um, aspects that we need to, that we need to use and thoughts we need to have is that basically bringing the community in and saying, hey, can you identify locations, whether they be small or large, where we might potentially be able to partner, say, with the city agency, the state, the county, to expand that green space, maybe tack it on to a an existing infrastructure project so that we really can serve our community well? Because like, again, I have a, and I have an eighteen-month-old and a four-year-old. I want to make sure that they have open space and green space in order to enjoy their community, just like every other place here in the city of Long Beach.
But given that, like you said, it's built out more or less, you're you're saying it might have to be like more non-traditional green space?
Abs- absolutely, absolutely.
Jenny, what what is your, what is your plan um, for? Go ahead.
I would like to see uh, the L.A. River development, uh, more, more of that, and um, and um, and just better parks, and even uh, buying up houses if necessary, doing whatever necessary to give us green space. Because, you know, congestion is a big issue here, you know? I'm from the sticks of Mississippi, so when I fly back and forth, the first thing I notice is, ooh, man, this place is really congested. And so we need whatever it takes to uh, give us a more um, green space and more privacy, and more as personal space. And I see that's really a mental health issue, there's not enough personal space. And so it's a, it all ties in together, you know, green space, mental health, and all that personal space, so.
Right, and and Joni probably is, I mean, she knows this from being, you know, the chair of the planning commission, but I mean, are you, are you supportive of like, the city does already require certain open space elements to be included into housing production? Um, is that?
I would embrace that too.
Okay.
Take a bigger chunk. And uh, it needs to be more green space, i- it really does. It's it's the first thing I noticed when I come back here, it really needs more green space.
Okay, uh, well, I uh, I think I have all the big broad questions this time, so I have another broad one to throw at you. Um, and Jenny, we're gonna come to you first on this one. So um, the the average life expectancy in North Long Beach uh, is five to seven years uh, lower than the average life expectancy in wealthier communities in in East Long Beach. Um, and the pandemic only magnified those uh, health and income disparities. So what would be a a concrete step uh, you would want to take as council member to actually start tackling such a wide-ranging problem? Jenny, go ahead.
Well, I like to have a health food council, not just, you know, we don't have to, you know, become, no, I just want to clean up our diet, just to commit to clean up our diet in North Long Beach, you know? And look at the community food, you know, and and I would see, uh, I mean, um, I can pig out on junk too, but that's not sustainable. We have to have a sustainable fuel in our sustainable neighborhood and do every other thing. I know it's boring, but it really is true, you know, due to sustainability things, a walkable neighborhood, you know? Uh, space, you know, uh, and to make it a happy neighborhood. Happier than ever. So anyhow, making a happier neighborhood where people walk around, hang around, and uh, enjoying each other. You know, right now, it's too easy to check out and to be on Facebook to your friends and where wherever. But it's 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 more difficult to be local, and I think it's time to be local.
And uh, just to follow the quick thirty-second follow-up, um, can you get, put that into a proposal? Like, how would, how would you uh, bring those values into a proposal before the city council? That would actually encourage that that connection you're talking about?
Oh, um, number one, we need cops to supervise us as as little old people, you know? By the time I wash my dishes and do everything for everybody else, it's ten o'clock and everybody else is in bed. But suppose I want to go to the coffee shop in the, in the park. The cops ought to stand there and supervise me as I go to the coffee shop. I'm not getting drunk, I don't even drink, and drink my coffee, smoke my little joint, and then have fun with my friends, and then I go home. To me, that's old age, how old age should be, don't you think so? Not early, old age should be that way, young age, you know? Something about alcohol, it always seems to screw up, you know? So I would like avoid the alcohol and go for the uh, for the pot, and then since I'm a coffee freak, let's go for a coffee. Okay, uh, neighborhood now for coffee and pot, okay.
Joni, to uh, to you, uh, do you mean to restate that question, or you got, you got? Um, so I was talking about the the uh, life expectancy disparities between North Long Beach and and South Long Beach, and it's a problem that was magnified by the pandemic, and it's a very big, broad problem. I'm wondering how, as a council person, you uh, begin to take concrete steps to actually address that?
You wanted to throw the big issue at us, uh, so, well, from a broader context, right? We're talking about, and this is where my, like I said, my public health experience comes in. Really, we're talking about structural issues, right? With the the city of Long Beach, but just more broadly, right? When we think about, like, historically, for folks who don't know about issues about like redlining and where, say, you know, because, you know, North Long Beach is predominantly people of color, right? Um, the reason why North Long Beach, uh, you know, from an economic and and a racial standpoint, looks the way it is, is structural, right? And so those structural issues that affect black and brown people and folks of color mean that we have lower life expectancy because uh, because the economics are around that, because of the discriminatory practices, issues around housing, access to healthcare, right? A lot of these are these are things that we we dealt with when we were doing the framework for racial reconciliation. I um, I led those health equity discussions, and these were all the topics that came up, right? And so many of the recommendations that came out of that around really thinking about issues around diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, engaging our community, making sure that we are activating them and and getting their ideas about who they want to be and what they and what they need. So a lot of this might actually just be a larger um, interaction with our stakeholders, with our residents, right? Talking about doing an actual needs assessment and saying, what do you actually need from your city? I think we spend a lot of time kind of talking at people and telling them what we think they need as opposed to having them tell us what they need. Um, because again, we're, we're, we're a public institution, our our job is to invest in our communities. Um, and then, and again, you know, these are, we're, we're talking about a city trying to take on very large structural um, issues that have predominated for decades. Uh, and so from a city council perspective, a lot of that is going to be the implementation of many of the recommendations around issues around our youth, education, housing po- uh, policies, in in acting, you know, interacting with our our healthcare providers here in the city to really think holistically about how we implement all those recommendations that we had from the framework of racial reconciliation.
Okay. To go a bit deeper, just like I did uh, with Jenny, I'm wondering how you put that into a proposal that you can actually bring?
So it is a series of proposals, right? So I think that's the thing, right? Like, so you're talking about an issue that's so broad and so large, is that basically, you're going to be, we're gonna be um, carving, I won't say for carving up, but basically be taking segments of many of the initiatives that came out of that framework, and then basically saying, we're gonna have to bring each of them to city council separately and say, okay, this is this particular issue. So whether it's a housing issue, is it access to healthcare issue, whatever have, um, whatever, you know, whatever it is, and then basically saying, okay, how does the city in interact with the stakeholders here in order to improve our community? But it's going to be over the long term, this is not going to be one particular agenda item, it's going to be a series of agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, we have, I think, two questions left, um, so this is a, this is a big one. Um, I'm always kind of, uh, I marvel at everybody that's running for office this year because whoever's in office is gonna have to deal with this budget mess next year, and it's not looking good. Um, it could improve, but, you know, so right now, the current projection is what, twenty-five point six million and a million deficit for next year? And that's not taking into account uh, the new contract negotiations for the police officers and firefighters, which could significantly raise that uh, deficit, depending on, you know, what happens with that. Um, if service reductions become necessary next year, what are you willing to cut? And I think this goes to Joe.
Yeah, so I have, that's not the first time I've heard that question. Um, and honestly, that is, I'll admit, that is a, it is a hard pill to swallow, because if you um, list, if you, if, for those folks who listened in on the um, the budget conversations we had, you know, we think about like city services and investing in our, in our community, you know, we were having, we're hearing a lot from uh, folks who work for the city, right? And their need for the city to invest back into its its workers, right? Um, and making sure that we're able to retain people, because we spend a lot of money recruiting and then having to replace those positions, right? Uh, and so it's hard to say what you can cut back, because during the pandemic, people also saw, you know, a decrease in city services already. So we're already talking about having to kind of go back and backfill and do um, deferred maintenance in communities and things like that. Um, all I can say is what I would not cut, um, and what I would not cut, again, is like, I'm already, I'm I'm going back to um, really investing in our community, thinking around those those larger subject matters around, you know, public safety and homelessness, and really thinking about like, hey, how do we leverage the the resources that we have with our, with our health department, with our existing city resources to really say, how do we tackle some of the larger issues? But honestly, I can't say not having a deep dive into our um, into our budget um, and what our resources are going to be on the ground um, this time next year when we're really talking about it. Um, it's hard for me to say what I personally would cut.
So you said you wouldn't be, uh, the one thing you wouldn't would be like?
Our health, it would be our health department.
But our health?
The funding, the funding actually goes to our health department, so.
Right, but I mean, the health department gets such a small portion of the general.
I know, exactly, but exactly, exactly. They get such a small amount, but I mean, I'm I'm being honest, I don't know what I would cut, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I just, I just want to make sure that you have an opportunity to like, you know, and if, and that's an answer, is if you don't know, that's, you know, I just want to make sure you have the opportunity. Jenny, uh, twenty-five point six million dollar deficit, possibly getting bigger, maybe, it could get smaller, but I mean, there will likely be a deficit of some size next year. What are you willing to cut from the budget to?
You're asking the wrong question. The question is, you know, like a dollar, can this department produces a different dollar than a dollar? Uh, so it's look, you have to look at efficiencies, and that is where governmental efficiencies, and that's where my training is. And for the last three and a half, four years, uh, I've been studying government of efficiencies. At first started with my husband, he was studying the city's website for years. And then after he started that, we started studying my hometown's website. And so I've been studying governmental uh, information accounting for uh, like three and a half years, and now I'm studying governmental accounting at Rutgers Online. And it's not, but this is not any old dollar, it's, you have to study efficiencies, you just don't cut dollars, you see? And also, you have to say to the public, you know, what would you rather have? This or that, you know, seventy, seventy thousand on here or seventy, let the public say, oh, no, this is more important, because the way it goes through City Hall, the public doesn't realize that uh, they're trading off opportunity by some of the choices that's done at City Hall. So it's 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 efficient, the efficiency of the dollar, and it's not just across the the board, dollar cuts.
So I just want to make sure.
You're counting, you want me to turn the blackboard?
No, no, I, I, you know, covering City Hall for as long as I, efficiency is a, is a way that they say cut sometimes, is.
Like across the board, it's like, where's the most efficient dollars? Because uh, there needs to be some efficiency, and I think to some, who's not doing it is uh, Laura Dodd. She's flunking at uh, studying government efficiencies of City Hall. And that's, that's what I aspire to do, if you like me, city council person, thank you.
So let's cut the city auditor's office, then, let's.
Oh, but I think. And her forte is not governmental efficiencies, efficiencies in government, and that needs to be her forte, because, you know, she's out there looking out for the taxpayer, hopefully, you know, hopefully.
I, I, it was a joke, the city auditor's office is important, uh, Jeremiah has a final question for you.
Well, we're two, two CPAs, and the council never killed anybody.
All right, uh, thank you, Jenny. Um, so actually, well, we're gonna come right back to you on this one too first. So um, it, when, no matter who's elected here, um, both, both parts of the ninth district now are are gonna have a a new council member. Uh, they've had the same council member for a long time, and and either way, you're gonna come in and be different than both those uh, previous council members. Um, tell, tell us how you uh, would lead that district uh, differently? And Jenny, you're first.
Oh, transparency, I would like to hang it up from the, the, maybe we should do every banners. The Federal Transparency and Citizen Participation Act lives here. Oh, Lord, hang it out to dry, we want to see the information, and also, we want to see accurate information, and you know what? Some statistics I just do not believe, because you know why? They are not true, you know, we need statistical truth from this, I can't say the words, statistical truthfulness, and we need transparency, and that's something we need to improve on.
Thank you, uh, and Joni, to you.
Oh, can you go ahead and repeat the question?
Yeah, basically, uh, you're, you're gonna be a a new city council person for both sides of this district that were uh, were changed around, and how would you lead differently than the previous council members?
Um, I mean, my big focus is gonna, always gonna be on, a a big focus is always gonna be on data, and it's gonna be on community, right? So I've built relationships here um, in the ninth district over the last decade, and so I'm gonna leverage those relationships and making sure that people feel heard. Um, even if they don't necessarily agree with, you know, um, the decisions that you always make, people want you to know that you are taking into account their perspective, that you know that you're hearing their concerns, and that's weighing in on the policies and the recommendations that you're making. Um, and then I'm gonna want really clear uh, data and metrics from our city about the programs and policies that we put in place and saying, okay, are these things working, are they not working? How do we shift our resources and our dollars to the most effective um, programs and policies that are going to to benefit my community and benefit all of the city of Long Beach? And so I'm gonna leverage a lot of that as I'm interacting with the city, different city department heads, and really saying, okay, give me background here, give me context, so I can make sure that we are, as we move forward, are moving it forward in a positive direction and not repeating any kind of mistakes or things that may have been made in the past.
All right, thank you, and I think, uh, Jase, we're gonna move to closing statements now.
Yeah, uh, so who went, who went first on?
It'll be, it'll be Jenny, or Jenny went first, so it'll be, this time it'll be Joni first and then Jenny. So Joni, if you want to give your um, two-minute closing statement.
Sure, um, so I want to thank you really for your time uh, today, because I'm just caring about the direction of our city. I know these types of endorsement, not endorsement, but these kind of interviews are labors of love, right? It's, it takes time and effort to 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 create these, and so I just want to thank you for that. Um, again, I'm incredibly honored to have the support and endorsement of so many local, state, and federal elected officials, working family organizations, and numerous community and neighborhood association leaders. Um, I'm honored and humbled to know that I'm considered a leader in my community, and that my thoughts and opinions are well-respected. I've been privileged to serve in this community and in at city-level appointed positions, including my neighborhood association, our business improvement district. I'm including my neighborhood association, our business improvement district and our city commissions, most notably now that I'm plant, chair of the planning commission. Um, having district level and city level perspectives on many issues facing Long Beach will allow me to hit the gra- hit the, the ground day one. I know that the work that has to be done and I will build on my record of experience as I take, uh, as I take the next step in my leadership journey. I'm grateful for the enthusiastic support I've received since we announced, um, our candidacy at the beginning of the year. And I think the strong first place showing that I had, um, in the primary shows that we have a strong team and I have a lot of support behind me and the community is behind me. And so I really am looking forward to partnering together to improve our city and elevating the ideals of service to our community that we all share. Um, and so I just want to thank you all for your time today.
Thank you. And, uh, Jenny, to you, two minutes closing statement.
I apologize for my earliest statement. I have a campaign manager and he gave me a closing statement accidentally, but in the wrong place. And yeah, but I would like to say I'm here on the shoulders of my husband, Tomas Gonzalez. Okay? So, uh, to my friends and neighbors in the ninth district, thank you for your trust and support. Your endorsement means a lot to me. Um, and I appreciate your votes in the, uh, the June primary election. It shows that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that my opponent's been a hundred, over a hundred to be elected for city council. And now my opponent so far is, is going to outbid me by eighty thousand dollars. I'm the only candidate running for district council that has signed the official pledge not to accept campaign limits. My opponent rejected campaign limit expenditures. Our city council speak cannot be, see, cannot be bought for a campaign hemorrhaging in the money. And for now the time is eighteen years, we've been waiting for change. We finally have the voice to determine who our next city council member will be. It's me. I'm your candidate. I'm a person of the people, obviously. But my, my many years of public service include, I was co-founder, co-founder of the Long Beach Clean Government Project with my husband, Tomas Gonzalez is the best. Now secretary of the League of United Latin American Citizens, Long Beach LULAC. I was organizing with the Willie Velazquez Institute, the voter registration and civil rights project. Um, I've been protecting and serving people with mental health issues in Long Beach. And please visit my campaign page, Jenny Gonzalez for Long Beach City Council. This week in my campaign, what was it? We have for a live viewing. Oh Lord, no. Let's make history together. Vote, vote for me. You're the most important endorsement I have. What do you think?
Thank you guys. Uh, the, thank you to the candidates for joining us today. And thank you for everybody who's going to maybe watch this eventually. I hope you do, especially if you live in the ninth district. You have a choice to make between, uh, Jenny Gonzalez and Joni Bricks Odie. And that, uh, the elections on November eighth, uh, by the time you watch this, you'll probably have your vote by mail ballot. If you vote from home, you could maybe have it with some coffee and some weed. I don't know. Um.
Happier than ever.
Yeah, um, some, I mean, but everybody, so everybody in this election is going to have the opportunity to vote on, uh, you know, for mayor, uh, for the four, um, citywide ballot measures that are also very important. If you live in the ninth, if you live in the third, if you live in the fifth, you also get to vote for a city council member. It's a really consequential election. So I hope you guys do show up and do that on November eighth or before then. Um, for our, for more election coverage that we're going to be posting, you know, today and in the weeks between then, make sure to, uh, go to lbpost.com/elections. I'm Jason Ruiz. This is Jeremiah Dobro. Thank you, everybody for tuning in and have a good day, afternoon, evening.